Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just praising you for the life that we have and the good life that we have here in Guthrie and for the citizens and for the community and all the things that we were able to do together. We just thank you for this past weekend and all the activities that we had and the fun that we had. We just want to thank you for that. We just ask that you be with the meeting tonight and that your spirit would guide and direct us in all decisions to be made that would honor you first in this community. Second, we pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Don. Call to order our Public Works Authority Meeting of June 6th. Item number two on the agenda, community announcements. He's just leaving?
Yeah, he's done. He quit.
Okay. All right. Do we have any announcements or recognitions? No. Item number three.
He's back.
Consent agenda. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Authority's meeting of May 6th.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the minutes as identified. Item number four, discussion, possible action to either terminate or renew the fiscal year 16, 17 school resources officer and utility agreement with the Guthrie Public Schools. Staff comments?
Effective August 1, 2016, City of Guthrie and the Public Works Authority entered in agreement with the Guthrie Public Schools for the FY 2016-2017 school year whereby the city waived the schools' participation and funding for two school resource officers and the payment of water and wastewater usage above the monthly minimum bill to facilitate the retention of three existing full-time teaching positions for the FY 16-17 school year. City Attorney has reviewed the above referenced agreement and determines that expires on June 30, 2017. City Attorney thought we should notify the school system in writing of either the termination date or the city's desire to renew the agreement. From a cost standpoint, it's my understanding historically, the school district matched the cost of the two school resource officers with $66,000 from the school. And the difference in utilities fees for water and service in FY 16, they paid $96,951. When it went to just a minimum bill, that reduced it to $12,000. So the lost revenue was $85,000. I know we all realize that schools are a critical element to our well-being and to ensure a vibrant and successful community in the future, but financing schools has not traditionally been a city function.
Well, I thought, if I may, when we did this thing, that we agreed to do it for a year. I didn't realize that it was even going to be on an agenda to continually do. I thought that was a one-year deal to pull them out of the financial slump that they were in at that point. And I support the schools just as well as ever. My kids went to school here, graduated here, kindergarten on through senior, both of them.
Well, I think the, Brian, the question is to terminate or renew.
I didn't know there was an option to renew. I thought when we did this, we did a one-year deal and that's all we did. I'm surprised it's even on the agenda, to be quite frank. I didn't know that this was a, you know, a perpetual thing that we were voting on last time.
It wasn't clear in the agreement that was signed that it was just a one-year agreement.
Okay. Well, I think, I think the assumption, and that may be bad, but the assumption by even the school was that it was a one-year, a one-year thing.
That's what I thought.
Although, again, I think that the language was, is a little bit nebulous in the, in the actual agreement.
Well, as I see it from previous city manager and the budget that was presented to us, we had the money there from what that budget showed and that was going to be okay. But obviously, we don't really have that money there this year to be able to do that.
Well, and that money wasn't even really there.
Wasn't there then, but it was, it appeared to be from what we saw, but obviously, it's, wasn't there then and it's really not there now.
I suppose we don't have any idea what kind of an impact this would have on the schools. I mean, enough that that's our real concern, but do we?
Well, the, the letter that was attached by Dr. Simpson identified the three positions, three teaching positions that that money was used for. So.
Are those still an issue, is what I'm asking?
Well, I don't know that their budget has been increased by the state, so I would suspect they would have to figure out some other way of, of funding those positions. And, you know, I think, I think the entire council recognizes how important the school system is for our community.
Yes.
But I think our, our financial situation is such that, that maybe this puts an additional strain on an already tight budget.
We don't have anyone from the school here to address some questions, I guess.
And we're not sure that even those three positions are still even there through attrition or something.
Chief?
I, I would not dream of speaking on, on Dr. Simpson's behalf, but since, since I knew that this issue was going to be coming to a head at some point, I've had numerous talks with Dr. Simpson and he has expressed to me, at least preliminarily, that he has made plans to absorb the necessary costs. He viewed this as a one-year, one-time arrangement and he intends to reinvest the $66,000 in the SRO program. Now, that, that's just from my conversations with him recently, so things could have changed, but that's what I've gotten from him multiple times.
Well, that's what I think we all thought when we did the deal.
Yeah. Chief, since you're on the dais there, so can you tell us a little bit about the impact of the SRO from your perspective? The, what kind of an impact do you think it has on the school, on the students?
I, I think, I think we're lucky to have the SRO program that we have out there, especially with, with the three individuals that are participating. We traditionally get nothing but high regard from parents, teachers, and many of the students.
So I think it's a critical thing for us to have in this day and age. We don't live like we did yesterday anymore.
No, and the way, the way Guthrie's set up and as old as some of our school buildings are and as widely spread as they are, where in many communities, you might be able to get by with no SROs because of the compact, close proximity. Here, I guess, we've got, each SRO has primary responsibility for two different schools and then whatever's left, they're divided up amongst that two. And it's, you know, it is what it is. We make do every day.
Okay.
And we get good marks.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that even though I wasn't part of the council last year, I do, did what Brian said and even from the community standpoint, I viewed it as a one-year financial holdover for the schools.
Okay. I will entertain a motion then, and the motion must identify whether the motion is to terminate or to renew.
I'll make a motion to terminate the agreement.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to terminate the agreement with the Guthrie Public Schools. Item number five, discussion and possible action to cancel our Tuesday, July 4th Public Works Authority and City Council and further set a date for a special meeting in lieu of that July 4th meeting. Discussion?
Is there a need to set a special meet? Is there something that's going to be critical on that agenda?
No, sir. I just worded it that way. It says in lieu of, if so desired. I'm not aware of anything that would require us to have a meeting and replace the July 4th meeting.
Okay.
But I wanted to give the council the option on the agenda.
All right. Any other discussion? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
Unanimous approval to cancel the Tuesday, July 4th. And was the motion to set a special meeting in lieu of?
No.
No. Is that all right with the second?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. So we are canceling the July 4th, Tuesday meeting. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. And I'll call, call to order our City Council meeting.
So moved.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Did I not call for a vote on that?
Did we vote?
I thought I did. Okay. All right. I thought I did, but, okay. We're okay. We're back on track.
It's a good thing you're going on vacation tomorrow.
We are back on track. We are back on track. Item two on our City Council agenda of June 6th is the consent agendas, item A through E. A is approval of the minutes of May 12th. B is approval of our minutes of May 16th. C is approval of our minutes, City Council minutes of May 16th.
Thank you, sir.
D is to confirm the action taken by the Public Works Authority concerning the School Resources Board. And E is confirm action taken to cancel the Tuesday, July 4th Public Works Authority meeting and City Council meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion on those consent agenda items A through E? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agenda items A through E. Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve amendment number two with the C E, CEC Corporation for the rehab runway lights at the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. Staff comments, please. Shalan?
Yes, sir. So this is in preparation of the runway lighting and basically giving you a summary of what the city will apply for a construction grant for the fiscal year 2017. We did a design-only grant. It's already concluded. It's finished, so now we do the construction grant. This amendment, number two, includes additional services to be performed by the airport engineer related to the bidding grant administration, construction administration inspections. So the total is the $52,900. FAA will pay 90% of that. Our sponsor match is $5,290, which will be split between both cities.
There you go.
And then we'll, we'll start that up. The bid opening is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. And then that, hopefully that will start about probably the first, second week of October is when the runway lighting will start up.
Okay. All right.
Move to approve.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Is there any questions, Shalan? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? I love that 90-10 grant match.
Yeah.
Isn't that great? Submit your votes.
Of course, the $5,290 will be split between two cities, so.
Yeah. It's a deal.
Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward with the amendment number two. Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve the request of Kenneth McBane for lump sum payment from the City of Guthrie Retirement Plan. Staff comments? Jim?
Why are we even involved in that to be, that's my question.
Good, good question.
Because, I mean, they've earned the right to do what they want, I would think.
Well, essentially, he, he's asking for a lump sum, not an annuity. In other words, a monthly amount. And so the plan document requires that an actuary review the impact of a lump sum payment from the plan, and if it has a negative impact, then they probably, it would still be a council decision either way because the council has to say yes or say no. In this case, it's close to a scratch or just about better off. It's cheaper to give them the, from a plan perspective, it's cheaper to give them a lump sum payment than monthly annuity. But those have to go before council. Lump sum has to go before council.
Okay.
It's a requirement of the plan.
Oh, the plan requires that?
Yeah, yeah. So, and we participate.
I see. That's the answer to the question then.
There you go.
So, so the money's with the plan?
Yes.
We don't, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions of Jim before he leaves? The mic. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved.
And a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval.
We'll wait on the city manager report.
Let Mr. McBane go ahead with his lump sum payment. City manager report.
We'll do that July 4th.
It's a big break. I'll give it on the way back in Ponca City.
There you go.
You bought that.
Saturday, some items happened in town that hit the bricks, 5K and One Mile Fund Run. Sunday at 1:00 is Touch the Trucks, raising awareness for child abuse prevention. Monday, June 12th, at 5:30 is the initial meeting of our Sports Complex Task Force. On Tuesday, June 13th, there is a meeting of the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board. And then on Saturday, the 17th, I get to judge a cupcake tournament at the library.
Awesome.
Need help?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You need any help?
You need extra judges?
I'm sure they would.
Going to that one.
One recent thing that we did internally, I know the Fire Department and Police Department typically do this, but we created a four-member Safety Committee of Staff, HR Director Jim Algren, Fire Chief Harlow, Police Chief Don Sweger, and Director Library Services Susan, Suzette Chang. The purpose of this committee will be to review accidents and injuries to see if there are, one, did people have their safety equipment on and where they follow standard operating procedures for whatever event it was that created the accident? And then what steps we can do or the individual could take that would prevent that accident or injury in the future. I think that will bear some positive results for the city. The budget schedule, I believe I've sent this to everyone, but the budget forms and instructions have been distributed on May 30th to all the departments. On this Thursday, June 8th, Finance Director and the City Manager will internally review the estimates of revenue for next year. And then on Friday, June 30th, is the deadline for all the departments to submit their budget request internally for next year. On July 10th, HR Director, City Manager, Finance Director will review personnel and training requests for next year. On July 17th, 18th, and 19th, on those three days, City Manager and the Finance Director will be meeting with each individual department to go over their budget request. And then on July 24th, we will have a team budget meeting of all the departments to go over what the budget looks like. On August 1st, there will be a workshop prior to that City Council meeting to do the, present the first draft of the FY 2018 budget. And then we will probably have additional discussions on the budget at our annual council retreat that's scheduled for August the 3rd, which is a Thursday from 9:00 to 4:00. Then we have opportunities, if necessary, that we could call a special meeting for August the 18th for a workshop, if it's necessary, or have another one on our regular meeting on August 15th. But our target is to publish the notice of the budget on August 26th and have the hearing on the FY 18 budget at the meeting on September 5th and then subsequently adopt the budget. And of course, our budget year starts on October 1. We have set up to do quarterly reports on the second meeting in January, April, June, and October. So our next meeting, we will be doing a detailed report on the Motel Tax Fund 45 and the expenditures to date. And we'll also be doing a detailed report on the capital improvement project, the sales, CIP sales tax and the projects, what's been completed and the status of the other projects. On August the 3rd, we have scheduled from 9:00 to 4:00 City Council Retreat off-site. We are in the process of reserving the Cedar Valley Golf Course, and I understand that is a facility you've used in the past and appreciated it. We are still trying to identify and retain a facilitator for the event. Tenetif agenda is the discussion of the FY 2018 vision and strategic plan or our goals for 2018. Discussion, continued discussion of the 17, 18 municipal budget, discussion of our various capital projects, those in Fund 54 from the CIP tax, Fund 55, the C-MOM fee projects on wastewater. And then we'll probably update you on some of the special projects, the Cotton Creek intake, wastewater treatment plant, the TAP grant, streetskeep improvements, Safe Route to School project, we're at on the Sports Complex, talk about future TAP grant applications, talk about some back routes, efforts that we're undertaking. Then there will be some miscellaneous topics. And then we will probably also talk about the 2002 Comprehensive Plan Update. So right now, that's the tenetif agenda for our retreat. I would like to update you. You awarded a contract to Anico Flooring for new tile and carpet at City Hall. And confusion, city staff did not put a specific spec in for the carpet, but apparently showed the bidder the carpet that we desired. When they came with the carpet, it was obvious that it was not the same carpet that they'd been showing. They had went back and adjusted their bid to upgrade it to the same carpet that we had requested. That increased the price to $46,631. It added just over $8,600. They are still lower than the second bidder, who was $52,524. So they're still $6,000 lower than the next lowest bid. And so after a visit with City Attorney, staff decided to move forward with that project, but just wanted to give you an update.
What date was the workshop? Third or fourth?
Third.
Thursday. Why wouldn't we do it on the 4th or Friday?
I'd written down on the 4th.
Well, I sent out an email. I thought I included everybody on there and I did not get.
I didn't get that email. Are you sending it to my City of Guthrie, maybe? Because I haven't been getting those.
I'll have to check. I don't have it committed to memory, but I've sent it out to everybody.
I didn't get it.
I'm not available on August the 4th. You can move it to August the 4th, I guess, if you want.
But you will be there?
But I will check. I send out regular emails on things to City Council members and, and you've gotten some of them and I've been sending them all to the same email address.
No, I know. My City of Guthrie, all of a sudden, just stopped working one day. It wanted these massive updates and it's just not, it hasn't worked since.
I will, I will verify what email addresses.
I'm gonna bring it to Erin probably tomorrow to see if you can get it all fixed anyway.
In the meantime, I'll double, I'll send you a test and make sure you get it.
I know they have to do a renew of the password periodically.
Well, what it wanted me to do is give it complete access to everything on my phone and my laptop and everything else. I said, forget it. And I even talked to our people in Edmond and they didn't, couldn't get it either.
All right. All right. So resend that out, I guess? I did get it.
I got it too.
Yeah.
Okay. I did not.
All right. Okay.
Steve, can you just forward me yours? That would work too, or not.
Sure.
To my Gmail, if you don't mind. No, OU's not playing. Sit down.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Comments from City Council? Councilwoman Paget?
I really don't have a lot to say, except I do think we should appreciate the city staff every day, all the time, all year long. They do a great job.
They do. Councilman Taylor?
I'll second that. I think it's great when you go out and, and in a small community and the people like the police and the fire and, and, you know, your city workers. It's not like you go down to Oklahoma City where you might be on the hit squad down there because a pothole doesn't get fixed or whatever. I've been watching some shows, so I appreciate what staff does. And I guess Red Brick Night was very successful while I was out of town, but it sounded like it was a really successful evening. So, oh, and when's, when are we having the 4th of July fireworks?
It'd be the first Saturday, July 1.
July, okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. That'll be, it sounded like it's gonna be a lot of fun.
It was a blast last year.
Yeah, it was. So, there you go.
Good.
Yep. I'm just gonna ditto everything that's already been said. Thank you for all the city and staff and what all you do for us and keep us going and keep us running and all you're looking out for. So thank you all very much and that's about all.
Councilman Case?
Well, I would like to congratulate past Councilman Gaylord Thomas. His daughter's getting married this weekend. She just graduated the Air Force Academy and that's just a lot of good news all at one time. So I, I'd just kinda like to pass that on.
Okay. Councilman Bathright?
Yeah, I wanna, I'll ditto everything everybody said as well. And, you know, we have, it's kinda interesting, group called Keith Thomas and Associates. They're a state biologist. They're gonna shock Liberty Lake Tuesday at 8:30 a.m. And to get a kinda head count, so to speak, of what species we got going there, size, the whole deal. They're actually gonna bring them up and, and weigh them, categorize them, the whole deal, and obviously release them back.
For the wildlife park?
Yeah, because there's opportunity for us to restock these lakes. You know, fishing and that type of thing is, is, is a big revenue generator, in my world, anyway. And I think, you know, it's, it's gonna go a long way to tell us what we got in that lake.
Can I fly a couple of them?
Why, you bring the charcoal.
They just float, float right up.
Councilman Smedley?
Ditto everything that everybody else said and Red Brick Nights looked very successful. July will look successful and be chaotic. July will look successful and be chaotic, but good luck to Don, month of July.
Let me just make, make reference to Guthrie being the lead article in the, on the cover of recent Gazette, Oklahoma Gazette. Nice article, great, great interview. It's three pages, Brian. We can, we, I...
No.
No, 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 let me, let me start here. Let me start. Yeah, I can do that. I can do this. It is. Guthrie's a way cool place.
There we go.
It's three pages, and a good, good interview with Lucy Swanson and the Arts in Guthrie. And anyway, out there, you're viewing audience, if you can pick up a copy of this, it's well worth your effort. Really, really good. And my traditional identification of looking for volunteers, Forestry Board is, has one vacancy that they're looking for, one volunteer group, a person, and the Park Board has a couple. So if you're interested in either one of those two activity areas for our community, the opportunity is in front of you. So forestry and parks. Go to cityofguthrie.com and check it out. Item number seven, consider approval to convene into executive session to, for purposes of discussing, discussing confidential communications. We have a...
So moved.
Motion and a second. Okay, any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous to move into executive session.